Good evening. Tonight is December 10th in the December Exeter School Board meeting. I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting to order. And we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our Okay. So, the first thing we're going to do is talk about the reasons why we might go into non-public session, which we will need to do at the end of this meeting. There will be, there are different reasons why we go into non-public, and it's usually something that may be talking about a public employee or something of that nature. So, we will, when we're ready to do that, we will cite which reason we're going to go into public session, but that will be happening later in this meeting. I would like to see if there are any visitors here this evening who would like to approach the board. Okay, I see them. I still see on here we have public input, but I believe that's from last, the last meeting on the agenda. So, I don't think we have any public input tonight. So, we're going to go ahead and move on to the, to the approval of minutes, which the minutes were many, many fingers long. I don't know if anyone's had a chance to review those.
I have.
Would you like to make a motion?
We were talking about the, I think we're making a motion for us to review the minutes?
To approve.
Well, we have amendments.
amended. So, if you have amendments.
I do have amendments.
Okay, okay. You want to go ahead and let us know what those are?
So, in the policies section, which is beyond committee reports. I had it queued up. Yeah. Oh, here it is. Okay, so it's section, thank you, 710 through, yeah, this section. Most of where it says, Mr. O'Day, actually, I'm on the policy committee, and I was the one that was talking about the policies. Specifically, in 710-2, the records retention. That one, instead of Mr. O'Day, it should be Ms. Edwards. And again, here, third policy. The only one that Patrick, like, they should all be adjusted. The only one that Patrick spoke about in detail that is correct is the 710-8, which is the wellness, nutrition, and physical activity, that top section. He made all the comments on, on that, because he'd been on that committee from a previous school year. So, to everywhere else, it should say your name. And then I'm in here with Neil, which is correct. That's all.
Does anybody else have any corrections? We should like to make a motion to approve.
I approve for the correction. So, I make a motion to approve for the corrections.
My second.
Thank you. Okay, so then we'll, all those in favor?
Aye.
And that's to approve both sets of minutes. Is that correct? Thank you. Okay, so we're going to move on to the Chair's report for PTO. And I know Allison wasn't able to be here this evening, so she sent me an update. She's saying that Main Street and Lincoln Street School requests, requests for teacher reimbursements should be complete for this year. If there are any teachers who have not submitted receipts and plan to, please have them do so immediately. Fundraising, the Square One Art yielded about $3,400 in profit this year, very close to their $3,500 goal. The sea dog night they, they did, I believe that was last week, wasn't CETA? The fourth, yep. That was $250 they got from that. Box Tops has raised $1,240 so far. They're over halfway to their $2,000 goal. I know that's a really easy way for people to clip and turn in, you know, regular products that they have at home, send them in in baggies to their school. For additional fiscal year 2020 planning includes a fifth grade yearbook, more restaurant nights, a parent night out in the spring, spirit wear, and teacher tailored kits are some ideas. The next up is spirit wear, which is coming in January. The Get Fit in Maine sponsorship is gearing up. Their next meeting is 12:12, which would be on Thursday at 5:30 PM in Mr. Schmidt's room here at Lincoln Street School. They still need volunteers. They always need volunteers, but specifically some board members. They're looking for a PTO co-president with Allison. At the end of this school year, they will possibly need a Box Tops coordinator and cultural, cultural enrichment coordinator, as current volunteers have fifth graders leaving the Lincoln Street School. And they'd also like to get one or two more fundraising volunteers for next year. The next PTO is in January, January 8th at 5:30 PM in the Main Street School library. And that's it from PTO. So, we can go ahead and move on to committee updates if we have enhanced learning.
Do you want to roll business?
Oh, you know what? I'm looking. Sorry. Yes, is there any old business that we've talked about? Universal meals is something that's come up briefly the last few meetings, and hoping you might have some information to share about that?
Yeah, I do. So, the universal meals in the state of Hampshire is called the Community Eligibility Program or the CEP program. We don't qualify. You have to have 60% of your students directly certified by the state for free meals, and we're very far from that. So, we, we don't, we can't go to the state to get the 100% reimbursement. However, Jean Pierce, the food service director, said if the school board is looking at trying to help families, she would recommend starting with the reduced priced students. Right now, we have 26 reduced priced students between the two schools, Lincoln and Maine. And so, she's suggesting that right now, they have to pay 40 cents a meal, that the school cover that cost, so they would get a free breakfast and a free lunch.
Every day.
Every day. So, the cost for that for the year for both schools would be $1,872. So, that would be a budget consideration that is not currently in the budget you'll see tonight, but that would be the cost for next year, given their, if their numbers stay relatively similar. Again, it's not a huge cost if a few kids added to the 26, because it would be obviously 40 cents per day per student, which comes to that total for both schools to about $2,000.
Do we know the income range for children, like, their family's income?
I believe the poverty rate, and don't quote me on this, I think is 25,000 or below for a family of four? 28?
28. So, they would be, if they're paying 40 cents, they're just above poverty? So, are poverty students 100% supported?
We don't have any students that, that is what they do. You get a free and reduced meal. You only get the 100% if your school has more than 60% of their kids that qualify for free reduced lunch.
Oh, so even our students who would qualify for free still have to pay 40 cents per meal?
Yes, that's what she's, yeah, that's.
I think you're talking to
That's okay. Go ahead, Steve.
We have students that get free lunch.
Free meals, and it costs?
And then we have other students that get reduced lunch.
Okay.
And Jean's talking about just giving the students who are reduced lunch at no cost.
Because, okay, so we do have students with free lunch?
Yes.
The state already, the state changed the regulations, but obviously, families' incomes probably didn't change. They made the, the regulations more rigorous. So, she put that in the email to me, just for the board to be aware. So, that would be her recommendation if you were concerned about how to support students that might be struggling to pay for their reduced meal.
Is there any sort of understanding of whether year over year that fluctuates quite a bit, or is it kind of?
She's, she said, when I asked her that question, it's been fairly consistent.
Just curious, yeah. For the reduced, okay? Yeah, okay. That's 26.
So, could we do this, you know, now, or will we have to wait till the next budget?
Well, we have the budget on the agenda, so when the board discusses that, you can always say, we'd like you to add that amount in to, for the, to cover this cost.
It's lunch and breakfast, right?
They automatically get breakfast. It's part of, it's a whole package, yes.
That's great. So, then no child who couldn't afford lunch, we get, or meals, we get breakfast and lunch?
As long as they filled out the paperwork.
Oh, right.
To get certified by the state.
Which the social workers, workers should be helping with, right? So, that should be debottled.
Part of that goal, yes. As we know, some families choose not to fill out the paperwork.
That's a great idea. Let's talk about that.
How many families get free lunch?
I don't know how many get free. She only gave me the number for the reduced, because we were looking for a budget number, and their free wouldn't affect that budget.
Didn't we hear that 17% of our population?
I don't think it's that.
Is it that high?
17.
17.
I've seen that number bounce between 15 and 18 for the last 10 years or so.
I want to say it's been right, it's been under the 20 mark for as long as I can remember.
I think the average for the state of New Hampshire, I think, is 20, I think. So, we're just just below the average. Whereas, I mean, the other towns in the district have a much lower, like, single digits, very, very low.
Any other questions on that?
No, thank you. And then the board had asked for a safety update that directly related to Lincoln and Main Street. So, I included that in your packet. I kind of just bulleted a list since last time we did a safety update here. So, as you can see, a lot of it has to do with working with Rich Kane, and, for example, updating the school emergency operation plans, making the changes to coincide with the Alice training, the announcement, the grant, the supplemental grant that was originally not approved, that was approved later, if those cameras were done. It applied all at the same time, but remember, one school got approved and one school didn't. So, that was, that project was completed. Rich and I completed training that was listed regarding school safety, everything from, I know now how to, emergency preparations for food. So, do you have any questions about that? I know the numbers, and we're to call, yeah. So, I oversee the food, apparently. Thanks, Molly. So, I have to take so many courses to be certified to do that.
What does that mean? You would oversight, oversee the food?
I don't know, except I have to sign forms, and in order to sign the forms, I have to take courses to be well informed to sign forms. Right? I really don't know what the mail thing is, honest. It's like an oversight that someone at central office has to sign, and when we lost everyone at the SAU, somehow I got the food service thing.
Thank you.
So, I took the trainings, and I signed the form, when actually, Marcia Dubbs does all the work, truth be told. We have the new receptionist that was trained with all the video equipment and others these schools were, that knew, any new receptionists were. We conducted the lockdown drill at the preschool. Carrie Drew, we are working on, we're getting much closer to getting that text messaging system to all parents that will want to opt in. You should have gotten the email saying that second, that how to do it if you want to opt in, it should be coming. Hopefully, we'll try to get that done. It's a matter of exporting and importing information to get that second email out when that system's ready, but that's exciting. That'll be an immediate, you know, on your phone. The behavior intervention teams for Lincoln Street, School Street, and Main Street are up and running. I look at Deanna and Renee are on that, those teams, and Beth. So, we meet every other, twice a month, and that, I think, is going well.
Yep.
And then we went out to that national conference, and the team that presented was very well received, and the last big thing is hopefully, Department of Homeland Security, Michelle Clark up at the state, we're working closely to try to get bit training for all 103 districts in the state of New Hampshire.
Oh, wow.
It looks like we're pretty close. So, that's exciting.
And it says here that you accepted a position as a board member for the National Lobby.
I am, so that'll have a board meeting out there.
Interventions, that's wonderful.
Yeah, that's good. Interesting. I'm the only K-12 person on it, so everybody else is college, so it's kind of cool.
That's great. Good for you. Thank you. Thank you for doing that. Any questions on that?
Steve, I have a question about the locked door policy and teachers' feedback about the locked door.
Classroom locked door.
Classroom locked door.
Yes.
I've heard some feedback from teachers that it is, they're wondering if they have to do it, that it changes the feel of the school, if it's really necessary, and so I was just wondering about, about feedback on it, and how, if it's a policy, if it's a recommendation, how we're applying it. Seems like the nurse's door is open for people to get in.
These are for classrooms where there's mass numbers of students. So, the nurse often has kids traveling in and out during the day, like the library or things like that. I think it's not a specific policy in regards to policy, it's a procedure that the superintendent and the team made based on research. We had a security and safety task force. Last January, teachers asked for classroom tools, what kinds of classroom tools should we purchase to keep their kids safe inside their classroom? And you might remember, I go to those. And so, there's things called, like, the barracuda you slide over, scissor lock, and all these tools. So, the Safety and Security Task Force asked a small committee to be formed to explore all these classroom tools and make a recommendation back to the Safety and Security Task Force. So, there was a, it was open to anyone that wanted to join. We had police, administrators, central office, Rich Kane, and board member were on that committee. Everybody went out and kind of researched. We gave them different products to research. Some of them, ordered them and tested them. We called Alice to see if they manufactured something, you know, that perhaps they correlated with that training. The bottom line was, none of the tools, some of them actually were very hard to use, like the ropes to tie and the directions, some broke. Remember, the barracuda, we slid over the thing, and when you opened the door, it just broke. So, the recommendation out of, from Alice, as well as in the research, the Governor's Task Force Safety School Safety Report, the Secret Service Report that we've had here before, recommended the safest tool is to keep the classroom door locked. So, given that research, we brought that back to the Security and Safety Task Force with a sample letter that would go out. The Security and Safety Task Force then supported that recommendation. So, we said, and they asked us to, I think this was in May, as I recall, we asked that, could we not implement it in May, but implement it in September at the beginning of a school year to make an ease of a transition with the beginning of a new school year? And the Safety and Security Task Force said that makes sense. So, in August, we started meeting with our administrators, et cetera, reminding them. We also, they also knew in May, we talked about this was coming in September. Some principals talked to their faculties about it in May, some waited till August and September to do that. I know all of the orientations, we talked about it, for the new teachers coming in. And then it was implemented, and Dave sent a letter out to everyone in the community, I think in September, early September, kind of explaining the process and how that went. So, it came back to the Security and Safety Task Force, and when we just met in, was that October?
September.
Was that October, Patty?
Yeah, was the last one October.
And, what is Monk's official title now? Deputy Chief, right? Deputy Chief Monk did a presentation on locked doors, and again, pointed out the research to who? To the Safety and Security Task Force, and presented all the research that supports locked doors. In other words, there's been no active shootings. When there's a locked door, they move on. For example, in Virginia Tech, and he names some others, who I think, there was a school, I can't remember which one, where the second floor, nobody was injured because they had locked their doors at Parkland. So, he explained that again to that Safety and Security Task Force, because they were getting feedback from some administrators that their teachers, as you brought up, say it was affecting the culture and climate, et cetera. And so, they spoke to that. Again, there was more conversation, more research presented, and Travis Thompson, who's the Chair of the Co-op Board, as well as of the Safety and Security Task Force, asked David to consider all the information, and that's what he did. And David decided after considering the information and talking to the police, to stay with the initial recommendation to keep classroom doors locked. So, that being said, I mean, I've talked to the administration here. I think that it's now becoming more comfortable. I think there was definitely a comfort level that first month of school, when people were adjusting, when students were adjusting. I know, for example, I was walking through this hallway, and I don't, one teacher has a Bluetooth doorbell they put on the outside of their door, and kids ring it. So, you know, teachers are working to make things comfortable and come up with systems. So, it creates that sense of a classroom that's safe. I did a ton of research trying to find out any longitudinal studies as to anxiety, et cetera, et cetera. I could not find anything related to culture and climate that related to keeping classroom doors open or shut. I did find things that related to how you organize your classroom, if you had community meetings in your school, if you had programs such as responsive classroom, open circle, restorative justice, are all things that support a positive culture and climate in your school. Are you welcoming? Are teachers greeting kids in the morning in their doors? I found lots of research on that. I found research around anxiety-producing situations, such as if you run live drills with active police coming in your school, that students could have had, you know, high anxiety to those types of tabletop drills, if you would, with students in school. I couldn't find anything specific to the doors.
So, the feedback that I heard was about the feeling with, well, I volunteered for lots of years in the elementary schools to run reading or spelling tests or math facts in the hallway. And it used to be when you came into the school that there were lots of different groups working in the hallway. And so, that has definitely changed, and so I think it's a cultural shift here to do that, and to restructure how teachers work in their classroom, whereas if I came in and somebody needed a quiet space to do their spelling test, we would go to the hallway. And now, that's not a place to go. So, it would be interesting to hear, I guess, from the teachers at the end of the year about the adjustment that's made, and if they feel like the shift that had to happen, that they've been able to adjust, you know, after a period of time. People, I feel like the students felt it. There was a lot of posts on Facebook about it, on the Parents Forum. It just seems like a topic that had come up a lot in the safety report. I saw it and thought, maybe we should talk about it.
No, I appreciate you bringing up, and I think that's our, that's really where Dr. Ryan ended up, let's implement it for the year, gather feedback in that May timeframe from administrators, from classroom teachers, from kids, and see, see where it's at, and see if there's different research, you know, et cetera, where that rolls out. Certainly, we also, I did talk to teachers that came to our district, that came from districts that had locked classroom doors. And all, there was, there's four of them that happened to be in the orientation sessions that, when we talked about this, and all of them said it was an adjustment, but after that first couple of months, it was, became the new norm, so to speak. They didn't feel like it had a huge impact on the culture and climate after people made that adjustment. So, we're hoping, as an SAU, I support the locked doors, because like I said, I've done a lot of research, and I believe that is the safest tool to use to ensure if something happens, and it isn't always just an active shooter. There's a lot of variety of
Sure.
Different situations, particularly with adults in the community that may have something within another adult in the building. And that's really the situation we run into the most in SAU 16 at elementary schools, is an ex-boyfriend, a husband, a wife, those kinds of situations where a threat is made to harm the school, mostly because of those kinds of situations, not where a student's inside the school and poses a threat. So, those are the situations where the locked doors, I feel, again, my opinion, ensure that our kids stay safer, because those are the, those are the adults that might be get into our building, because we know them. They are a father, a wife, a mother, and they would get in and then create a safety issue for our students. So, again, we'll reassess, certainly, and I know I've asked administrators along the way, and I think they're, feel free to add in or anything like that. I think there's an adjustment period, but overall, it seems to be going okay.
Just a few details. I think the most that I hear is the inconvenience, kind of, and the disruption that occurs more than really the cultural issue. I think the doorbell idea that we had down here, one of our new teachers, was just ingenious, and so we're looking to expand that a little bit and see if anybody else wants to try. I believe that's at a couple of team meetings, and there's been some interest in that, but it's just the wrapping, you know, on the door is a kind of a bone-jarring kind of sound on some of these, the hard-stiff doors. So, that's really, it's the interruption is really what teachers, I think, are trying to work around. And the kids are always, they always want to be helpful and get up out of their desk and let somebody into their room, too. So, it's just working through, you know, procedures that people are utilizing in their classroom to avoid some of that kind of stuff.
Thanks. Thanks for bringing it up. Okay. All right. So, I guess we're going to move on to committee reports, and now we're ready for enhanced learning.
All right. So, enhanced learning meant today, we spent pretty much the entire meeting discussing Alma and some of the work that Main Street School has been putting into it, implementing this year the K-32 reporting system. So, that's why Main Street School has been working very diligently, and I'm very appreciative. We were singing your praises today, Steve, and Main Street School staff, because of all the work that you guys have been putting into it. And so, just looking at the parent and family view, and what the report will look like, in addition to what it looks like on the backend, and some of the work that the teachers and staff have done and will be doing in the coming days and weeks as we approach that January reporting time. So, huge, huge shout-out to the Main Street School staff who's been working, working on that.
Excuse me, Drew, did you say Alma?
Alma.
Oh, Alma.
Yeah, so Alma is the tool, the assist computer system that is being used for, basically for the teachers to enter the students' learning information, basically to communicate to families how the students are doing. It's replacing report cards, more or less.
Drew, I'm just going to put a plug in. If anyone has questions, it is posted on the webpage, the Chris Andruski-Ester Aspel presentation on the K-2 reporting.
Good point.
And that has Alma in it, and shows a sample of that reporting system.
Have the report cards been replaced that way yet?
K-2, just K-2.
Just K-2 in total?
Yeah, it'll come out in January.
January, okay.
Yep. So, also, Chris Andruski's been putting a lot of work into getting Alma up and running and functioning in a way that's, works, you know, on the front end and then on the backend with the information, entering all the information. So, it's, it's no small task, for sure. And let's see, I think one of the things that I think is hugely valuable, that I just, from a position where I'm able to sort of observe some of the work that Main Street School's been putting into it, and so we can prepare on this end for the coming years, and it's going to be our turn. And just some of the conversations, the planning that the teachers and school leaders are having about, you know, the curriculum and deciding as a group what they're assessing, when they're assessing it, and to, you know, how they're assessing it. So, I think that's hugely valuable, just to have those conversations, and this provides a nice opportunity to force us to do them as pretty frequently. So, that was the bulk of the meeting, and I'm going to have to get back to you in the next meeting. I didn't write it down.
Thank you.
I had one other, I attended the Enhanced Learning this morning, and one of the really exciting parts of the meeting was to hear the Lincoln Street teachers talk about how much more information they would have now about each student, that it wasn't, it wasn't so simplified, it had competencies which start with "I can" statements. And so, the teachers felt like the information they received from Main Street to Lincoln Street would really help them in their classroom. And people were genuinely excited about it when they saw the list of competencies and how they would be used. So, I think it's an exciting tool.
That's great. That's great. Next, we have wellness, I mean, facilities, I'm sorry, but I don't see Mr. Wendell here. I don't know if you have an update, and we haven't met.
No, he didn't give me an update, so I know we haven't met, I think, so.
So, all is well. Actually, I want to ask a question related to the new parking lot and all of that. How are things working out? We haven't talked about it in a bit.
Is anyone to come up here?
Yes, I'd love for you to come up here.
From Lincoln Street School's perspective, the whole of the parking lot, the
Bus loop.
Bus loop has been spectacular. There's quite a bit of extra parking spots. It's still maintained, and we usually have about 70, 65 to 70 open parking spots a day.
No way.
Yep.
Wow.
Yep. And, so, yeah, this, last week, right, I think you had the trailer, I'm sorry, I'm forgetting the name, Northeast Passage, thank you, Northeast Passage come up. There wasn't enough parking at Main Street School for them to park their trailer. They were able to park it up in our parking lot with no, no issues. They were able to park it up in our parking lot with no issues. From what I can tell, on busy nights, you know, when the gym is being used, there's no competition for parking spots during those busy times. So I think it's a huge bonus and improvement for the town and for our school. The bus loop has been great. A few little, you know, growing pains with the snow. We had to call on sort of a last-minute emergency removal as we were realizing that the snowbanks were really tight on the, for the buses to get out. So thankfully, Mr. Wendell sent his guys over, and they removed that pretty quickly on both sides of our driveways so that buses could get out. Between the curbing, the new curbing, the snowbanks, it was just, the cars are parked a little bit further out when the snow comes, so it's extra tight. So we just know now what we need to do. It's been fantastic. And the drainage is significantly better there, too. So when folks walk on the side of our building, they're not wading through puddles or skating on ice or anything. It just, water goes where it's supposed to go.
That's great. Good.
Thank you.
Did a great job getting that done. Okay, we move on to wellness and nutrition.
So the Wellness and Nutrition Committee met on November 26. And the bulk of the time was spent by the committee was just reviewing the proposed wellness policy that's currently on the board docket. And the committee really appreciated that the input that they had provided on the policy was incorporated into the draft that came out from the SAU. There were, which I'm pleased to say, were no recommendations.
I was just going to say.
And our next meeting will be on January 28.
Thank you. Okay, we have diversity and equity.
So we are still getting up and running. But over the past month since our last meeting, the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee has been reviewing potential SMART goals. We had a big, long list of goals, maybe sixteen or seventeen goals. And so the committee read through those, and different members assigned themselves to goals that they felt like they could take some control over and our direction leadership over. So our next meeting will be discussing that, and who's going to do which goal, and maybe some of the steps we'll take to complete the plan. So that next meeting is December 18th, at 7:45 right here.
Let me add two things, too. I'm part of that, too. As part of our discussion, we talked about the SRO discussion. And there seemed to be consensus that it might have been better to have had the public input earlier in the process, and I thought that was true. So I said I would say that. And the other is, there was a letter that Pat Yosh, one of our members circulated, I think this came before, if you pass it down. So this is something for the racial unity team, and we had Pat and a colleague of ours coming earlier last year, I think it was. And this is their effort and influence, to advocate for a person of color on the Safe Board of Education. So the question was raised, would the extra school board, could they, should they, would they advocate for, support this particular initiative? And my reply back was, my understanding is typically we don't take public policy positions, stances. So, I mean, I support it, and I signed the petition online. I guess I would ask for guidance about, I mean, is this just not, I know that, I think, you know, it's one SAU. And is that something that, you know, the SAU would be interested in looking at, or...
I agree with, we usually don't take a political view. So I would recommend at this point that you go online, like you did, and go on as a citizen, if that's something you want to support. That would be my recommendation.
And that's been our standard practice for a long time, I think, right?
Correct.
And I relayed that, so we can talk about that.
I'm just trying to read this quickly and not doing a very good job here. Could you just slow down for me one second? So this letter is, because you said something, oh, Pat.
Right.
So this is from Ken Mendes.
So there's a, do you remember when we had some folks in, I think it was last year, to discuss the efforts of this particular nonprofit? It wasn't incorporated as a nonprofit yet, but it was their effort to try and raise awareness of issues related to diversity in Exeter.
Yes, okay.
Okay, so she and her colleagues are now incorporated as a File 1(c)(3), I think. She, Pat, is also a member of the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee as a member of the community.
Okay.
So this, I think Patrick passed out a couple of meetings ago, I think, or someone...
I don't think I've ever seen this.
So I could be wrong.
No, it's okay. I'm just trying to understand what it is, so I can...
So it's just a nonprofit group advocating for a, requesting the governor consider a person of color to the Board of Education, or the Board of...
So there's a, can I help you out? There's a State Board of Education. So like this board, there's a State Board of Education. Governor appoints to that. So they're asking, we want you to appoint a person of color to that State Board of Education. And then they're asking this board to support their request.
Right.
But because it has some political...
Yeah, no, sir, that piece I understand. I just want to understand what...
That's why I recommend it, if something they want to do, go on as a citizen, because we, our practice is not to support a political...
Or to advocate for any position of public policy.
Right.
Right.
Is our superintendent on the racial unity team?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think for me, I just need to understand this a little better before I can, if there are other ways that we can voice our support as citizens, do you know, like, to the governor? Or how...
So there's an online petition, I can forward it.
Yes, please. Maybe you can forward it to all of us and just as citizens, if we were interested in supporting it, we could do so. You know, forwards it. Okay, thank you. And then we are going to, should we, yeah, let's hold the Wheelright Trust at this moment. And I'd like to move on to superintendent evaluation, which I'm not sure if there's anything.
Well, we did, I'll give this to you, because I printed it out, but the goals and objectives have been established. We will have to have our formative evaluation in January before the joint board meeting. It's pretty simplistic, same basic process. But you'll see when Esther goes through the superintendent report, we're having them format it so that it ties to the goals and objectives. So when they give us updates from the home office, we can see how it directly impacts our district.
I see.
So then, when we discuss it, we feel like we're part of it.
Yes.
And we're still evaluating the office of the superintendent. So that's everyone, Esther is our person. And that's pretty much it. Our next meeting, actually, I don't know when our next meeting is, but we'll have to discuss this. This will probably go on the agenda for January.
Okay. Okay. Agenda for January.
Go on as a committee report, as a separate item.
I think, no, we have to go into...
On public.
Public at the end of our January meeting.
Yeah.
Negotiations, so that's something we are also going to talk about at the end of the meeting. So we'll put both of those down at the end, along with Wheelright. So we're going to come back to that one as well. SAU safety, you just gave us an update from the superintendent's office. Does anybody else have anything we want to add? There's nothing, not immediately, I don't believe so. Okay, the Social, Emotional, and Mental Health Committee.
We meet next week, and the write-up of, kind of, the update was in the board report.
Have you held the focus groups?
They held them, not at a meeting next week, to get the results of the focus groups.
That's so exciting. I heard from teachers, so they're holding focus groups with teachers specifically. And someone told me that they've been teaching here for over fifteen years, and they felt like this is the first time that they got invited to do it, and they were really excited.
Oh, good. Nice. Excellent.
That finally someone was asking the questions, that they had answers to. And, well, and that they just didn't know, sort of, where to give their feedback. They didn't have, like, a specific complaint, but they felt like they had...
Information to share.
Information to share, and that there just hadn't been a forum. And so now there was. So.
Excellent. Good job. Okay, so we're going to move on to...
Esther, when is the next safety meeting?
I knew you were going to ask me that. I think it's January, but I'll look the date up. I actually might have written it. February 5th.
Okay.
Okay. So we're going to move on to, we have quite a number of policies to go over here. Patrick's not here to sort of give his, I don't know if he was at the last meeting.
He hasn't been at the meeting.
Yes, so it's just...
Yeah. And Dave.
So I guess I would ask you if you'd be willing to kind of support us through these and let us know your thoughts.
So I guess we could start at the beginning. EHAB, data governance and security.
Okay.
So the reason for this is that, to kind of put it in layman's terms, is that there's so many apps that teachers and students want to use, is that we have to have some kind of regulation so that we can have a secure school campus, especially, it feels like, for the high school. And so our superintendent was saying that it was taking him a significant amount of time every day to approve the apps that were coming across his desk. And so this is, you know, along with the state guidelines, to make sure that there's, you know, policy and procedure to make sure that all of the information of our students and faculty are protected. How did you, Esther?
Good, this, yeah, and this was driven by that RSA, the 18965 that passed just about a year ago, data security, you know, data security. So the joint board will get our data security plan, I believe, in January, presented to them. And this is a piece of it, is creating a policy.
Okay. And so it helps by having the District Information Security Officer, which is who our superintendent designates.
Okay, so he designates. Okay, so he doesn't have to spend all this time doing the apps.
So that these policies are written, and then someone else can apply it more consistently, which needs to make sense. So the board, I mean, the policy committee read through, and as you can see, didn't have changes. Actually, we did. Maybe not to this one. One of the pieces with the policy is that there's often a lot of overlap with what we already have written, and then recommendations by the state. And it gets really wordy to keep adding to all these policies. This one, I believe, is fairly new.
This was brand new.
So it doesn't have edits from what we previously had in SAU 16. So it's recommended. I think it's...
By the policy committee.
I think it's, it would make sense for us to adopt it.
Okay, so this is, is there any further discussion or other questions related to this? So I, I mean, I didn't see anything that jumped out at me, that I'm not a security expert on, so I wouldn't know. But, so does someone want to make a motion to adopt this policy?
Motion to adopt.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Okay, so let's move on to...
We have to do all of them.
Oh, sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Any opposed? Thank you.
Motion passes.
Motion passes. Okay, so let's move on to EHB, which is records retention, which is just a revision. Is this the first time we're reading it?
I believe all these came through last time, but we had so much public input.
Okay, so this would be our, sort of, our first reading of it.
Remember, you can, if the board chooses, you can approve a first reading. You don't have to hold it over if there's, if that's what you want to do. I think the change to this one, Esther, you can help me, is the special education records were specifically changed. And as you can see, there are sections that were recommended to delete, just because there was a lot of...
That's all the red, correct?
Yes, all the, with, just because it was a repetition of what was in the other parts. And I think that most of this is pretty straightforward in terms of how many years you keep certain records.
It's all...
Yeah. So again, I think that, you know, the rewriting of this policy, the part that was removed is just to reduce redundancy, and then to make sure that we are, you know, following the law for special education records.
Okay, so this, this EHB also has sort of EHB-r attached to it.
Mm-hmm.
So I guess, does anyone have any further questions on this? Or if anyone would like to make a motion to approve this as recommended by the policy committee?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Thank you. So that's going to be approve EHB and EHB-r, Sarah?
And EHB-r.
Yes. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion has passed. Okay. So now we're going to go on to GBEA, which is staff ethics.
Okay. So staff ethics and staff conduct are together. I mean, they're separate, but it makes sense to think of them together, because what happened is that, again, there was a lot of repetition in the policy. So the state of New Hampshire Department of Education came out with the Code of Ethics and Code of Conduct. And we read through it in great detail. And there's a section in here. It's fascinating, actually. So the reason that we don't just adopt the New Hampshire Department of Education...
Policy.
Policy is because we need to expand it slightly. And it's because this is, and we mentioned this at the last meeting, only for credentialed employees, I think is the term. Is that right? Credentialed employees? And because we have employees that we would like to follow Code of Ethics and Conduct who are not credentialed, we need to be sure that we have a policy that covers it. And that's the reason for this clause.
And you read all that?
I did.
So we had something similar, maybe it was the same thing before, that we talked about, rejected because it limited speech. Is there anything in there on that?
I did not read it for that, and that would be a good reason to have a second reading. Yeah?
Because I don't, I mean, I think standards are great on this stuff, but I think it's hard to ask educators to limit and restrict their speech off hours. You know, and the discussion we had was, you know, let's say they're at a political event, and they act somewhat uproariously, whatever the phrase would be.
Okay.
Is that, if that violates the policy, but that's also political speech. You want to limit a teacher's political speech, and would that be constitutional? I'm not a lawyer, but I would personally have a problem with that.
I think we should read it again for that. The conversation that came up, frankly, was about making sure that there was fairness in application of this, so that teachers understood what the Code of Conduct and ethics, like, what it means, and like, some practical examples. So the superintendent was talking about a way to present it to teachers in a way that had some case studies associated with it, so that you didn't have to sit down and read this. I mean, it's not that friendly. And that people would have that as part of their orientation to the school. And in the first year, it would be more comprehensive for everyone, but then after that, new employees kind of go through this, like, thirty-minute exercise so that you understand. And the policy committee was talking about, you know, how often in the news we see teachers, not often, but too often, we'd hope it wasn't in the news, teachers who had been with the school system for many, many years, and then they had to step down based on texting with students. There are different sort of case studies, and that was one of the pieces that the policy committee talked about in terms of implementation. But we didn't talk about it in terms of speech. So I think we can read it for that.
Well, if there are no objections, we can just push this off to a second meeting. Okay. Okay, so that would be GBEA and GBEB, because they're physically together. Okay. So we can look at JLCF, which is the Wellness and Nutrition, which has been approved by the Wellness and Nutrition Committee, it sounds like.
There's only one section that we thought that the board at Exeter would want to review. And it is, at the top of the page, it's page five of six. I think we have just... Thank you. Are you on it? Top of page, page five of six, of Wellness, Nutrition, and Physical Activity. So it is in red, and it's a new sentence that says, if a student... So it is in red, and it's a new sentence that says, "If a student causes harm to him or herself or others, administration may determine the safest way to meet the student's wellness needs." It's the second, it's in red.
Oh, okay, sorry, it's black and white here, so that's why I couldn't see it.
So one of the pieces about wellness and nutrition is that students wouldn't be held, I think the practical way to say it, is students wouldn't be held back from recess or other activities as a punitive measure. So the new piece of information, which I think is critical for the board to understand, is that there actually now is a clause in here that says if this student is harmful to him or herself, they can withhold physical activity. Is that right? Are we reading this the right way?
Or others, I think.
Oh, or others.
Is there an example of that?
Well, there's two pieces to the policy. The second statement is the safest way to meet that student's wellness needs. So you still have, it doesn't change the determination that the student needs an opportunity for physical activity. It's just that they may not be provided that opportunity in the same way that others are if they're hurting others during their regular recess time.
I saw it. And is that something that the school sort of manages regularly, if you will? Yeah, so that's not a new thing that, yeah.
On occasion, we've had students who, the structure of recess is challenging for them. They benefit from an alternative recess where they, it's less overwhelming, where it's less social.
Expectations and things.
Where they have to negotiate, where they can be more successful in being physically active, but not necessarily have to deal with many, many children at the same time.
So just out of curiosity, does that typically happen at their regular scheduled recess time? Or just, it might fall out a different way, but?
Oh.
Yeah.
Both. What space and time allows for, when we do do an alternative recess plan, we have targeted skills or goals that we're working on, and we slowly scaffold them back out to recess and try it with peers. So sometimes if they are just practicing in the gym or the side of the, half the gym, then we slowly work up to them trying it with peers, and then bring the peers outside. Sometimes there's kiddos that they still have a really, really hard time, and they have alternative recess, where they play on the playground with a couple adults when there aren't other kids, because they're learning how to play on the playground. So it just varies. It's all about meeting students where they're at. But we call it an alternative recess, because we think that recess is important for all kids, but so is the safety.
So it gives you the flexibility.
Yep.
So make a motion to approve as presented.
Okay, thank you. Motion to approve.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion has passed. Okay. So now we move on to B E H D, which is publicly inputted board meetings. And that was, this is the one, this is the one Patrick asked to put back in.
Yep. Because this came forth with changes, and there was, in the policy that the co-op brought forth, it didn't have the seven days before the meeting it had, you have, that the chair could put a limitation on how long you spoke.
Yeah.
And I suggest limited, I think, three to five minutes. But they didn't have to do the seven-day notice before that. So that was the, I think he wanted the board to look at that again, in particular to have him give notice before.
Yeah, but I think, did he want the notice for seven?
No, he wanted it reduced.
Right.
He wanted that, I think he wanted it not in.
Reduced or removed or something. So that's just, I would recommend we push this off to the next time when he's here to get clarification from him of what he wants in the policy.
And offering a copy of the other.
What he's suggesting for the policy. Yes, please, that'd be helpful. Okay, so since we don't need to make a motion on that one, we can move on to the principal's report with curriculum initiatives.
So I will say, we had Monday off, Tuesday off, and then we announced an early release day, so I really appreciate it. It was difficult, I'm sure, for families to have that schedule happen. But it was a day well-spent, the December 4th, early release day. We certainly, you heard a little bit about the ALMA, the teachers at Main Street School were using that time to really work on preparing for that report card. By the way, just for you to be aware, that report card is going to be going out electronically. We will make it available in hard copy, but it's a very extensive report card, so that will be a different practice for us as well. But classroom teachers used that afternoon to work on the ALMA report card. Will be sharing with parents and guardians at the end of January. Dr. Bennett shared a presentation called Teaching Kids Who Hurt with Special Education Staff. And the kindergarten intervention staff were trained in an assessment system called Ames Web. And we also had some staff who took a CPR and first aid training. We have kindergarten concerts coming up, probably my, one of my favorite activities every year. We'll be going to River Woods and Water Street on December 17th. We are going to try a little bit of a different format this year. It's going to be a little more informal. We're going to have the residents at each place sing along with us as part of the performance. So I'm really looking forward to that, and the children will bring cards for the residents as well. Coming up in December, students in grades one and two will be participating in the process called image making, and there, which is the, one of the things we do to support the writing process at the schools. It's an evidence-based approach to teaching writing that uses both visual and kinesthetic modes of thinking at each stage. And students will be starting the process by creating their own portfolios of colorful hand-textured painters, paper, rather. And Carla Buttney will be organizing that next week. On November 12th, we had an office visit. Debbie Ridpath Ojai shared about the writing and picture-writing process and assembly for kindergarten and first grade students. She was described as animated, creative, and inspiring, and the kids were excited to watch her create the pictures she uses for her books. And we want to thank Water Street for supporting that visit. For safety procedures, we practiced our first lockdown drill on Wednesday, November 20th, and the children's staff did an excellent job implementing that safety procedure. Also want to thank Rich Kane, who supported us with the drill. Classroom teachers have received recent training in various reading assessments. And then staff, once again, my office sort of looks like a warehouse. Staff are collecting books and toys for Main Street School families to help them have a happy holiday. And I do want to thank Susan Graham, our nurse secretary, for putting this community service together. And then codes for kids, Main Street School has joined up with the Exeter Firefighters for Operation Warm to provide brand-new winter coats to students in need. And this partnership between Exeter Firefighters and International Association of Firefighters, and we want to just thank all of them for their support for the children. And lastly, kindergarten students have been going on local field trips as part of their connection to the community, and they went to the post office and police departments as well.
So can I just ask you a question?
Yeah.
In relation to the ALMA report cards, how are we going to communicate with those families who don't have ALMA access?
Yeah, you know, I believe we'll be sending home something in writing that explains the report card and how it's going to be accessed. So we'll send home a written notice, just to make sure that parents get that. And I do believe also we're going to be doing some sort of survey as a district at the end of the year to get input, because it is a new report card, and we're going to want to know how staff, how families.
Received it.
Received it and their thoughts on it, because it will be, it will be different.
Big change, big change.
So we'll actually gather parent feedback in February and March on the first round. So we have to make adjustments for the June, then we'll do that too.
Curious, do the children, students know that it's coming home this way and not in their backpacks? Because I know that they would come out, "I've got the report card." Do I want to see it?
Well, it's interesting, because we, you know, we shared a lot about the report cards, but we certainly had a few calls about where are the report cards after the first quarter. This is one of the changes, is because of the, how extensive these report cards are, we're only sharing them in January and June. So we already had some questions about where are the report cards from some families who didn't read all the communications that went out. So I suspect there probably will still be some kids who will wonder that as well.
Thank you.
So I have figured I'd give you a rundown of just some of the things that kids are experiencing in their buildings this month. First, I wanted to do a quick plug for, this is the first year we're putting on a yearbook for Lincoln Street School. And so in one of my last parent updates, I sent home a solicitation for school-based photos. So if I didn't just, we want to do the best we can to get as many photos, to get as many kids represented in the yearbook as possible. So if you have photos of school-based activities or whatever that, you would like to try and have us squeeze into the yearbook, we're hoping that you'll submit them through the form that I sent out last week. And that yearbook group is, that's being run by the PTO. Michelle Hardell has volunteered to head that up. And so thank you, Michelle, and I'm looking forward to getting going. And we missed our first meeting due to snow, so they'll start up in January. Health office update, Ms. Garrity and classroom teachers have been working on personal hygiene, so handwashing, brushing teeth, regular bathing. Mrs. Garrity's words, "The teachers and I are working together to help the students look, feel, and smell as beautiful as they are." So we too, at Lincoln Street School, are working with 68 Hours of Hunger, Operation Warm, through the fire department. Also with Martha, the Pearl Outreach Program, to try and help the students and families in need throughout our district. So there's, this is the time of year, there's a lot going on. We have a Giving Tree for similar purposes here. In addition to, big thanks to the Lions Club, who provided some free vision screenings to, I think it was, ended up being about 85% of our kids. They flagged a handful of kids, so parents were aware and needed, if they needed to go and have some things checked out for their eyes. So it's a great benefit, free benefit that the Lions Club offers pretty regularly. Our book fair here.
Book question?
Sure.
Do they offer free eyewear as well to the kids?
There are ways to do that. It's through connections, through various connections, but it's not a guaranteed kind of thing, where if you get flagged, you get free eyewear. But, yeah, the connections are there. The book fair just wrapped up. This is our first day in about a week where we've been able to walk through the library. It's been pretty packed in here. We extended it a couple of days due to the snow last week, so it's always an enjoying, a joyful experience for the kids to come in during the library and check out the book fair. Fourth grade has just finished up a Great Bay Estuary project-based learning experience. They focused on ways to lessen the negative impact of humans or increase the positive impact that humans have on the Great Bay. Their final demonstration of learning included slideshows, commercials, brochures, posters, skits, some quotes from the kids. They said, "I learned a lot about the Estuary, and now I know how important it is to our area. We had a great time working together, and I learned how to work better in a group together." So all things that we're definitely trying to target. Ms. Varren's class has been collecting for the Chamber of Commerce Children's Fund. We'll be collecting through December 18th. I don't know the exact total right now, but I believe they've collected well over $1,500 over the course of the month. So that's, that's always hugely beneficial to students in the Rockingham County area. And let's see, third grade's doing a lot of work with STEAM. They've been using Tinkercad, which they can create 3D buildings and work on some spatial reasoning skills. And some, some of the next-gen science standards, they've been, some questions they've been trying to answer are questions like, how do we know what dinosaurs look like? Why do plants grow flowers? What would happen if you didn't have a skull? Something that I try not to think about. And, and then the, in related arts, music and PE over the last four weeks, joint forces to do dancing, which maybe some of you have heard about at home. It's always some kids' favorite, some kids' least favorite, but I can tell you, when you go on there, there's at least one lesson somewhere, one song that the kids enjoy dancing. Say, the first week was square dancing. The second week included folk dances from Israel, South Africa, the Caribbean island, Caribbean islands, and from the US. And then the final week were party dances, so things that they might experience at a wedding or at a party of any kind, including the Katanji Joe, the limbo, the electric slide, if you're into that kind of thing, chicken dance. So it's always fun and enjoyable, and that's just to glance at what's going on around our school.
Isn't that still mental collecting also, like gently used?
Yes, yes, thank you. Gently clothing drive.
Winter clothes.
And winter clothes. I'm trying to remember what the deadline is, but.
The 20th, December 14th.
That sounds about right, yeah. Yeah, thank you.
So we're going to do a review of upcoming events. My computer just went out. Let's see, we're at Main Street School.
Get to Christmas break, I think, at the main event.
Yeah, Christmas break, December 23rd through January 1st. I'm looking forward to that. Same thing at Lincoln Street School, holiday break. It's like we just got homework clubs, things like that, nothing else. We had kindergarten concerts coming up, as you've mentioned. I don't see that on here. Is there anything else I'm missing?
December's quick.
Yes, it is, especially when we're having snow days, and don't tell me there's one tomorrow. Just go over enrollments, enrollments here, you know, set as they have been. School over school, they remain at about 500 students per school. Each grade sort of floats in and out of around 150, if you will. Same thing, 502 at Main Street, and in November is 465 as a Lincoln Street School, so pretty consistent. Let's see, S A U updates.
Sure, you all have your board report, which is now in that format that was on the superintendent's about. Patty, you spoke of. So you'll notice, if you look at the goals and objectives, one is around assessment and measurement. And so there's information about how we gather data or data points we're using, such as using instructional rounds, the I platform, which is the state of New Hampshire's platform for housing all of the schools' data. So that kind of speaks to that first one. And then the financial reporting, Superintendent Ryan put a budget update in there, kind of overall. You'll get a more extensive, obviously, budget update to Lincoln and Main Street very soon, Molly. And then kind of being visible, and there's some lovely pictures in this report.
Yes, I was aware.
I happened to be at Lincoln Street, which was very, very fun. And then other information about the social emotional learning, which continues to go on with Open Circle, restorative justice, and responsive classroom, as well as what Sarah spoke of with our staff members. They're giving us data points and information, and we're going to go over what they, our people have kind of gathered in the schools and bring that back, so we can make an action plan as a committee. And Helen Rist for Student Services, still trying to, they have some new configurations in data that they're being gathered from all the schools, the stakeholders, I know they're meeting with administrators, trying to see how to meet needs that you may have within your systems. And that's about it for the update. I mean, there's a lot of information in this, but that's kind of the gist of it. I can answer any questions if you would like.
So that, just question is, so that, that S A U report is sort of at the S A U level?
Correct.
And not, not relative to these schools in particular?
Yeah. So that's why we've just made that decision to kind of follow this outline, put it in your board report. I won't go over it extensively, because it does pertain to the whole S A U unless there's any particular questions you have about Main Street or Lincoln Street, because many of these things we kind of hit in the other committees.
Yes.
That are directly relative to Exeter school system. This is more, I feel like, what you used to get at the Joint Board. This is more, I feel like, what you used to get at the Joint Board, so I don't think you'll be getting those reports, you'll be getting these more often in little chunks, instead of a huge reported joint report from all of us. That's the intent.
Okay.
So feedback on how you like this in a couple of months would be great.
Okay.
I have a question, actually. I just was, this very last item under special education?
Yes.
Helen is looking at, would that be like little kids and the kids? So instead of utilizing outside services to place kids?
The biggest programs we've been done have been at the Middleland High School-
Okay.
-to reduce out of district. For example, there's the BEST program, the SOAR program, the Global Skills program. Those are all services that many of our students with IEPs access-
Okay.
...and have specific supports in them, so they can still access their education within our school system. They don't have to go out of district placement.
So it wouldn't apply to the elementary level?
It, it, there are some programs here-
I was gonna say Renee can speak to that.
Renee can speak to, that are certainly also doing that.
Yeah.
Yeah. I guess I was thinking, you know how we have a couple of kids that have to go out of district? Is that, this population?
Um, yes and no.
Potentially, potentially.
Potentially, but I mean, I think as a lot of schools are creating the program in their school. So we have a global skills program, and we have an emotional behavioral handicap program here in the district, which we have kept students. I think the principals could say we've kept students here with those intensive programming. And it's, the decision to put a student out of district is an IEP team decision, and it's a lot of stakeholders, and it's not an easy decision. And even if you have a program in your school that would match the child, there might be other reasons that would require the student to go out of district. I know for our case, often DSYF is involved in some of the out-of-district placements, where their courts are involved. So we definitely, creating these programs are in the best interest of the students, and we are keeping students in district with these programs for sure.
I guess I was reading this, like, this might be a place where they, like, instead of having to send them, you know, an hour and a half drive away, this might be a place where they would be placed.
Yeah.
It is.
That is.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
That would be a huge cost savings over time.
And there, there, for the, well, really, since Renee came on board in that position-
Works to keep them here at the school.
She's worked to keep them here, so there's been a reduction in those costs over time. That in the past five, 10 years ago, those students would have been a placement out of district. And now, because of the programming that's available on-site, they stay in district.
That makes sense?
Yeah.
Okay, that brings us to budget. Molly.
Just before Molly starts, could I just do the personnel, because that directly relates to the budget?
Oh, sure. Yep, 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 go ahead, sorry.
Sorry, Molly.
Please hold.
I just wanted to bring the board up to date on the last day to take the retirement incentive with the health insurance package was yesterday. So I do have the teachers that have opted to take that provision, so I would need you just to accept their retirement.
How many are there?
On this list, you've already accepted four, remember in the beginning of the year?
Yeah.
So in addition to those four you already approved, I have Lynn Bova, Beverly, how do you say Beverly's?
Bericchio.
Thank you, Bericchio. Bill Callahan, Nina Blasgeron, Mary Jo Gregg, Helen Burnham, and Denise Raisin.
Okay, so that's another one, two, three, seven, so there's 11 altogether.
That's what we estimated.
Yeah. So I just would like a motion to accept the retirements with gratitude-
With regret.
Or gratitude for their service. For their service.
So that was seven out of how many?
There's all, total, there's 11.
There's all total 11 that have accepted it.
Yeah, the deadlines passed.
Okay.
Molly has 10. I think 10 was what we projected.
I don't think they told us.
I think 10 was what we projected. Molly's saying that she has 10.
I have 10 of mine left.
Yeah, but I, one wasn't, I just, this is just who they haven't accepted yet.
Oh, no, but 10 that they're getting the pass.
Yeah, so there's gotta be an additional.
Well, I have-
You have 10 names in your packet?
Yeah.
Okay, so-
We can, I can go check in after.
Yeah. So would anyone like to make a motion?
Motion to accept with thanks and regret, as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any extensions? Motion has passed.
Thanks, I just wanted to do that before she brought the budget forward, the numbers in there, we didn't know who it was.
Okay, Molly, do you want to look at it now? Are you confused?
No, I gave it to her. Well, let's have a cross-reference after this.
Okay, so you're okay.
I have donations for the, do I have what the donations for the, there's also a donations pack. I signed something like that.
There's much stuff here.
How is that accurate? Because I know for the cooperative, they made a motion to accept all the donations going forward.
We already, we, that was a warrant article, probably 10, 15 years ago.
Okay.
Yeah, we're fine.
So these-
For the Will Right Trust, is that what you're talking about?
No, 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 just donations to Exeter.
Yeah, we did that a long, that's a warrant article, a long time ago that we explored because of Will Right Trust, remember?
Yep, I do.
Okay, that's fine. So that's the most updated copy of the budget. Really, nothing has changed since the last time we hit it up, except for the provision of retirement. And again, this is just the high-level summaries, so we don't have to go line by line. This-
I think we'll tell you what it is. The list is, the teacher contracts. There's not, the teachers are definitely separate. Yeah, correct.
So last time we talked, we did go over the high-level changes, and so I've included that summary here for you. So the total change from FY '20 to the proposed '21 is $698,292. And the biggest changes are highlighted here for you. And then, what we've done in the upper right-hand corner, we've put targets to achieve a 2.4 increase or a 2.9 increase in the amount we would have to reduce the budget by to achieve that.
Sorry, could you repeat that, about the 2.7?
Yep, so if we, so up in the right-hand corner, what we did is for an increased percentage, so if we want it right now, the budget is an increase of 3.4%.
Okay.
If we want to get that to down under 3%, to 2.99, we have to reduce our proposed budget by another $84,040.
Did you get to two boards, 205?
Correct. So this, I just put it out here for reference and guidance.
I know in the past, the boards often say you could get it a little percent, 2.99 is about that.
Yeah, so, so, do you, can you tell us what it was the last time we had a warrant article for this, what the change was?
Wasn't it under 3%?
A warrant article?
I don't think it's a warrant article.
Well, I'm sorry, I mean-
The budget last year.
The budget last year.
Should be like you-
Well, it's part, it's part of what gets approved by the voters, so it-
So one year prior adopted?
Yeah, but we don't know what percentage that was over the year before.
I remember it was right around that 2.9, because I remember we worked to get it to 2.9.
Which is why I put that figure in there, because I remembered the board had asked
to get it, if you could get it to 2.9. So I think, I'm 99% sure it was in that ballpark, right, it's at 2.99 or 2.97, something like that.
And what we've also done is, I haven't passed out copies of the default budget, but we've taken our first pass at calculating it. It's a very manual process and very subjective. So essentially, what we've done for Exeter since you are in negotiations, however, the aides are still under contract. Special education, that typically, you can't touch it because it's required. And so whatever the proposed budget is, is what goes into the default. Same with the SAU assessment and the bond that we have, those withhold to the proposed. So right now, the calculation that we have for the default is a 2.18 increase to $20,99,051.3, rather than the 3.4.
Okay, and what was that due, and you have that there with-
So I have it here, it's a very manual calculation.
Yeah.
I wanted to highlight where we're at right now with it. But essentially, what that makes it up is keeping everything is the current budget of FY '20, with the exception of your aides, which are under contract with the increase that's in their contract, as well as special education, the SAU assessment, and the bond.
Okay, so and what was the total number again?
So the total number is $20,990,513.55.
But that, we've got the items you listed in this paper.
So on this page here, it would-
Substitutes.
Let me, can I talk to you for a minute?
Sure.
Because it's getting a little confusing.
Okay.
So what Molly's passed out is the proposed budget, that's what you have.
Yeah.
So forget about the default budget right now.
Sure.
Let's stick to the proposed budget. This sheet really explains the increases from last year to this year.
Right.
Because we don't have the teacher contracts, you don't have roll-up a percentage in this proposed budget. So basically, that's why the majority of the increases is on this list. Because remember, your teacher contract will be a separate warrant article. Normally, in the years, those automatic roll-ups you would see in your proposed budget.
Like the aide.
Like the aides.
Because that's rolling through.
Yes.
Okay.
So that's the difference, okay? So the first thing we need to consider as a board is your current proposed budget. As you can see, as you go through it, pretty much everything's fairly the same. As you can see on this cover sheet, there's $31,716 that makes up for everything else, like for an increase in oil, an increase in the bus contract, those smaller items that go up or down. So the major adjustments are basically what you see listed here, and those are really the changes, the additions are changes to positions. So that's what you're looking at if you want to reduce it, really, because you can tell, you only have $31,000 to play with any other way, which would not get us near the $84,000 if you want to get that under a certain percentage. So really, what we're looking for from the board tonight is conversation around if you have questions on these positions that are being proposed by the administration, and/or what's that percentage mark you're looking for. And then, we can go back and work to kind of meet what you're requesting.
Okay.
So that's where the, kind of the first order business, because the default budget, you can't change. It just is a number for comparison.
Yeah, so, yeah, so, so number three on here is provision for retirement assumes 9.5 people, and we believe we're at 11.
So one of those people is a 0.5 person.
Okay, perfect.
So when we say, when I said 10, it's actually 9.5, because one of them's 0.5.
Okay, so is it 10.5 or 9.5, we're not sure.
I have to cross-check.
Okay, okay.
But again, that, that you can't change yet, right? So that's one of those ones, kind of off the table.
I'm just wondering if it's more. I'm not, I'm not, I'm wondering if it's more than that. I'm not talking about changing it yet.
Yeah.
Of that, how that impacts the bottom line, that's all.
So there's a proposal for four new positions, two long-term subs, a new social worker, and an increase from 0.6 to 1 in special education.
And again, the special ed transportation at home-
Is that a first?
Would be one of the things we would, we really can't change, it just was a large increase, so we want it on this list because it affected that bottom line.
So that one we can't change.
So really, you're looking at the substitutes, the new social worker, and the change from the 0.6 to 0.1. For, for large dollar items.
But additionally, we don't know what the substitute line typically runs anyway, because we don't know how often we're gonna need substitutes.
Right, all you can do on the air is look at-
The two long terms is to help balance the need for having different subs in there all the time. So, so it's, even though it's two new positions, it's not necessarily a cost increase.
We've calculated that out, and it's about, as I recall, about an $8,500 difference, because these, these people get some benefits-
Benefits, yep.
Between paying a long-term, paying, hiring a long-term sub, and just calling a sub in every day at the new rate for 185 days.
Yeah.
I believe, I had Michelle figure that out for a different district, I think it came out to about around $8,800, in that range, price difference.
If I remember, if I remember the conversation, is the long-term subs add greater value?
Yeah, yes, yeah.
So we want two, because we found, one that we've had has been very helpful.
Well, it does, it creates consistency, right? The teacher's gonna be out. It also creates some flexibility in your building. For example, if there, a teacher's out a half-day or somebody, you can use one person, and they can cover two different things. As, I'm sure you're aware, that we do have a substitute shortage in SAU 16, as well as everywhere else we talked to. It's oftentimes a sign of a good economy-
Right.
-which is why we upped the increase to the $15 an hour from the current rate, you know, was to try to entice more people that might, this might be something they would want to do.
I'll give you my personal feedback, because I don't, I think the difference between 3.4 and 2.99 is, to me personally, it doesn't matter that much. I think this is a good number. All these items look excellent. That's my feedback.
Have we increased it over 3% in previous years?
I could go back and look, I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah.
Because we'll also potentially have an increase because of the teacher negotiation.
Yeah.
Correct. So that will come.
There will be an increase.
Essentially, you will be adding those together for tax impact.
They are listed in a separate warrant. Okay, is there something we need to make a motion or something on this now, or?
Well, we need direction, because our public hearing is coming up in January.
When in January?
I mean, Patrick is often a vocal contributor to this.
Yeah, that's where I'm going with this. What's that, Molly?
It's on the Google Sheet, if you want to pull that up.
We don't have that candidate, yeah.
So I mean, Patrick, I want to talk about this, I think, more. So there's an issue of timing, is that what I'm hearing? Is the public meeting after a board meeting?
It's usually in the same, we do, it's in the same, we do the public hearing first and-
Right, right, right.
And remember, after the public hearing, you can adjust the budget still.
Right.
Because that's why you have the public hearing, right, to gather input from the public and then make adjustments if you choose to. It's at the deliberative-
Right.
-that you, you know, that's set, at the deliberative. So-
So I mean, I don't know how we incorporate his comments, if he's not here, because how should we go forward with this, guys, folks?
Let me, I'm just gonna look up the dates here.
Are those dates unmovable, or can we?
The public hearing dates are very tight, because they're RSA set, you know, between the full moon and the Halloween of the roads on the second Tuesday of the first snowfall. And, honest to God, it's arbitrary rules, but it is tight.
I do have a question, and I don't see it noted on here. Bus costs, have they increased for next year, or are they relatively? Because I know the last year, when we voted, there was a big increase that wasn't part of the default budget.
For the buses, I'm gonna do, I'm gonna do this.
Just while you're thinking, the public hearing and the school board meeting is Tuesday, So we do not have anything scheduled before that. We could, we could absolutely schedule a budget workshop, where you just-
That's what I was just, I was just-
Let's do that, because this is an incomplete discussion without Patrick, so.
Well, I have a question about the social workers. On page 15, it has it line by line, has a different types of transportation. But the, at the bottom, you'll see it has transportation, it says, has a regular transportation and a special ed transportation. Then on page 16 has-
Sorry, slow down for a sec.
Sure.
Sorry. So transportation, Main Street, Lincoln Street, so, okay, so the one-year adopted is $400,000, and then, what, after the one-year prior adopted, then it says payroll, then it says non-requests.
So payroll and non-request, you have to add those together to get to the budget total.
Okay.
So payroll is compensation, non-request is anything that's not compensation, and you add those together to get to your budget total, which is-
Okay, so it's increased, but that's, that in and of itself is increased by $24,500 that cannot be included in the default budget.
Correct.
Just so that people know that. That should be on here. Those are the, kind of, some of the additional things that we know that don't transfer forward. Is that in, is that in all other?
That would be in all other.
Okay, so thank you.
So this-
Is, oh, okay, buses in here, okay.
Yeah, so this is a comparison budget to budget for, for the adopted versus the proposed.
Got it.
So do you, do you folks wanna have a budget workshop the week before?
How do you guys feel about it?
We can give, that's the only way I think to really do it.
Yeah. So the, I would recommend Tuesday, January 7th.
I, I think that works.
That's the only week, that's really the only week you can do it in, I think.
Um, this, Renee, do you remember the bucket we created?
Do you know that bucket, that sort of safety net we created last year?
The reserve fund?
Yes, yes.
Is that not applicable or applied to this or is it, this line item for transport?
Um, I think the way the warrant article is written, we could use it for like extraneous special ed costs, meaning a, a student that needed to do emergency out of district placement and that could include transportation.
Are you talking about the special ed trust?
Right.
Yes, so that's not, that's not on the sheet, that's separate. Last year, you, the board chose to write it from fund balance.
Okay.
So if the end of the, and you could do that again, so it's no taxed impact, you could say 50,000 out of fund balance. So if there is 50,000, it goes in if it passes. If there's 10,000, 10,000 goes in. It's usually member board to up to 50,000 or whatever the number the board would choose out of that fund balance. So again, no tax impact, but it continues to add funding to any situation that we can't budget for, cause we don't know what exists.
There's a balance in there right now.
Yeah, I guess you're going with when can they spend it?
Right. Can't they deapply it here?
No.
You can't apply it?
Not if it's an existing situation. It says, it says for more like emergency use.
A catastrophic event.
Okay. Like a new.
So the special education, transportation, and home, whatever's cut off here, that is all costs that have to be incurred by the district right now. Those are costs.
Those are existing.
Those are existing costs.
So Esther, what time on January 7th will work for you?
7:00 AM. Actually, I mean, anytime, people, I know people work and usually it's, usually we do a workshop, we try to do it, I think, at 5:30. That's what I recall in the past. It's a 5:30 timeline.
Can you all see if that works for you?
5:30?
Yeah, does that work for you?
I think so. Would you send, send a note up?
Yes, I will.
And Dawn, just so you know, the part that was cut off is homeless, cause the homeless.
Homeless, thank you.
Molly, can you talk to the Assistant Director of Special Education at 70,000? Is that 70,000 more? Is that an increase from 0.6 to 1?
Correct.
So the base, do you know what the, the 0.6?
So that's substantial.
So like if we're looking at this 84,000.
It was 60-something. Currently, it's at 60-something.
Yeah.
62, I think.
So it's an additional, so that we.
It's not based though, it's, it includes benefits and things like that.
Yeah, that's the, that's the health insurance.
So that gets so much higher.
Yes.
Because I believe at 0.6, do they get benefits?
She gets 0.6.
They get prorated benefits.
Prorated, yeah. Or I think it's single.
So that's 62 is also including benefits.
So it's not, that's not her paycheck, if you will. It's, it's whatever, I mean, Molly, we would need to speak probably in non-public about what salary is.
It's the cost of the.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Salary plus the.
To get to that 84,000. So in the stable of three. And just, just to consider, we have an LEA for 0.6 that helps with Main Street. We also have an LEA for 0.2 at the preschool. So when we ask to increase the 0.6, that's including rolling into the preschool because the preschool's LEA coordinators retire. And so it's covering.
Changes.
Yeah, so it's covering the 0.2. So it's really, we have 0.8 myself and 0.8 LEA and I'm asking for 0.2 more, so two full special ed LEAs for meetings and programs. So to point out that the, all the new positions are all related to social emotional learning. It's not like the STEAM teacher that we had come. It's not provisions for curriculum.
Just the substitutes would be the only other thing that wasn't directly related, although you could relate it to consistency and, you know.
Yeah, it's important, it's important.
Thinking of this, like with, of this kind of impact, how many of our students are, like, the benefit, thank you, are being impacted? It's just a general question about each position.
No, it's enormous. It's an enormous impact. Like the social worker, I mean, it solves so many problems for the school, I think. Right?
I would argue that all of the students are impacted by their addition, honestly.
On a positive note.
Right.
And teachers and us, yeah.
And it's addressing, addressing issues the board has identified as priority.
And just to remind that we voted to approve the, the retirement, so that's, you know, 166,000 that is something that wouldn't normally be in the budget, which pushes it up.
Which we know have cost savings in the second year. Yep, so in the second year.
As long as we're mindful of it.
She has exactly how much. Yeah, you're gonna see 298,266 in year two.
Great.
And then you'll see that even past that in the narrowing range, every year after that. So one of the questions would be, could any of these positions be pushed off a year so that the savings that we have from the retirement of teachers would absorb that extra position? I'm just looking at all the angles. Just, that's all. I'm just, yeah, what's the priority maybe?
There's a sense of urgency, I think, for, for a lot of this stuff, because, I mean, they're making, it sounds like we're making nice progress with things like the social worker. We realize the increasing utility of it. And the second would be a multiplier effect, right? It's one or two people can have such a critical role that it, it creates an outsized benefit. It's a, it's a multiplier effect. That's the way I look at it at least. So I mean, it's an excellent question.
I mean, I agree. I think all these would have a big impact on our school. I just wonder at what rate we introduce them, is my question for the taxpayer.
So my thought would be that, I think these are, and these are strategic adds, because I think it's addressing urgent problems now that we've identified through a lot of work. That, that's the way, at least I look at it.
So what I hear for the budget workshop is that for the administration to come prepared to prioritize if they're asked that question on this list.
That would be helpful.
And just to sort of add, I feel, I, I think that, you know, the last budget season was the first time we sort of had a big jump in adding the one social worker, something that we, in years past, we hadn't, we haven't added positions very often.
And STEAM.
So, yeah, so these are just things. Okay, so Tuesday, January 7th, we're gonna have a budget workshop at 5:30.
5:30 here?
Here. Okay. Okay, thank you, Molly.
Thank you.
I don't know, we don't need Molly at the budget workshop, do we?
I'll have someone, because they can bring the computer and run numbers for you right there.
Okay.
If things are changes, usually we like to have somebody there.
Okay, all right, great, thank you.